I don't worry.
It's like.
My one.
I'm running stuff all over and just having that time to pick it up.
Nice.
Keep getting all she wants, she wants that. When you're at, it is called. And just give it away, just give it away, don't worry about it. Don't come out of the door. You got it, you got it, come on, you got it, come on. Just give it away. And upstairs. Full base. We made a giant basket. All forty two feet long. I put the monkey like pipes. Just giving like the five hundred. I said, I'll take that. Usually I would. Are you sure? I usually win the pocket with the salt and the sponge, sponging, which is disintegrating. Actually, usually what I want. Thank you. I'll read the. Mission statement, good to hear. Mission represents the needs of all Lemmonstor Public School students and places their interests above all other. Will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision on a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education. At this time, I go to the. Public forum session of the meeting, would anyone like to address the school committee, if so, just your name for the record, please. Do we have anybody signed up? We don't, we have anybody sitting out there, Kyle? No, I don't see anyone. All right, we'll move now, I'll close this portion of the meeting, we'll run. Oh, yes, Kyle. And now we'll move on to communications, any communications?
There are no communications this evening?
Now we'll move on, we'll go by Stu report, so you can settle in and then we'll come back, that's it. And superintendent, do you have a report at all?
Still Tyler's thunder.
All right, Tyler, he could be set up in seconds, you could tell.
We were talking today. I'm, I'm good.
All right, how about we?
Why don't we go to the presentations?
We'll sit here and decide what the final score of the Lemmonstor Pittsburgh game is going to be on Wednesday night. And whoever wins the lottery here will. A tree after. How about athletic update by Mr. David Pelosi, Coach Pelosi, Athletic Director Coach Pelosi? Listen to the roar out there. Fans are going wild.
How's everybody doing? Happy Thanksgiving.
You guys are welcome.
Um, all right, real, real quick, um, I just wanted to give an update on, on the athletic fields up behind the school. We had met over a year ago. Um, in, in looking at the, the plans that we had designed behind the school, we had made some changes to try to put, uh, the original large field with the track around it, and then we had another utility field with a softball field in that field. Um, we sent that out, all the documents out, and it came back just around fifteen million dollars. Uh, the mayor has, we met with the mayor, the comptroller, our superintendent in regard to the financing and. Uh, the city is at this time going to allot ten million dollars for the field behind the high school, which we are excited about. I mean, we wish we could have the other field, but that's going to be done in another phase. So at that time, Anthony Cleaves from Whitman and Bingham, who, whose dad was a track coach here at Lemmonstor, so he is very excited about the field and the track, uh, went back and kind of worked back from the fifteen million in order to uh, progress to the field that we're going to have, um, pretty much, I think I had some information, they were working on the electrical coordination with our CTE Dan Beishan, and the bidding should be going out by the end of the year. And then that will come back with our purchasing and we're hoping, I spoke to the mayor last week, we're hoping to get a shovel in the ground by the spring. So, you know, a lot's been going on around here with the floods and everything else, so we're, we're pretty excited. Um, the city's been great, our, our school department has been fantastic with, um, supporting all of our athletic programs. Um, all of you coming to games and, and really we, we appreciate that, and I know what coaches do, but, you know, it's time to get this field behind our school. Think we all know that, and as people ask me, I think we're closer than we've ever been. It's a very large project, there's a lot going on back there, I think you can realize that from the flooding that happened, so. You know, the, what you want to come out of this meeting is, is next spring, we're going to get a shovel in the ground, we're excited about that. And we got a lot of work to do to plan for that, you know, with the high school coming in next fall and, and things like that.
Say next spring, spring of twenty twenty-five or twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, this coming spring. Which we would hope, uh, asking around, some fields can go in eight months, some a little longer, nine, so where, you know, if we're lucky and there's no problems back there. Um, it would, I think it would be fitting for the season to open with our track in the following spring. Um, you know, being a high school with no track, is this large with no track is, is kind of struggle. But that's what we're hoping, we're moving forward and, um, looking forward to getting that, that track for the spring of twenty twenty-five.
The field's going to be turf?
Yes, so basically the upper field, the design is going to be Doyle Field with a six-lane track around it. With all of the, um, all the apparatus that you would need to run a track, need to be plenty of room in the, beyond the end zones to, to run and and do all the things that, that, that track would do, so it's, it's a very large field up there, um, which would support all of our programs. Um, every program that we have to practice. We, we have, we have the plan for the lower field, that was a part of the utility field, so that, that at this time is not going.
I'll bid all, right, so we can bid all, put them in there. People that we're doing, I haven't seen any of them in twenty. Yeah, you're talking stadium and seating and everything. I'm hoping the prices are competitive, because I haven't seen any of the projects, unless you build it whole. So I'm hoping that.
And we talked to that.
It all, so cleaves.
I'm in, hoping to get that piece of the, the project done, I mean, he, he. The engineers have it structured right now, so we can definitely get that track up in the upper field. And then he had to maneuver some things because there's going to be a receipt, uh, a, a wall that's going to support the softball field with another utility turf field. Um, so what, we're hoping that as we work our way back, things won't come in as much money and we'll be able to do a lot of those things and, and attack the other fields.
Do you mean things like the concession stand?
At this time.
We have committed to that, yes, yeah, for accessible, right? Right, be a great project for our kids.
So at this time, I think they're going to pour all the concrete for those buildings and the concession stand and then working with, um, Dan Beishan and, and all of our CTEI kids. We're going to put all those things in.
Where did we end up with parking lighting, I know that is part of the special plan, that's a myth.
Ruffled.
Yes.
Ruffled.
So have we exhausted, you know, and I know nothing about this, really about any kind of friends who are, you know, sometimes, you know, some company will say, gee, we'll put lighting in or explore those kinds of opportunities.
Or maybe do that.
Right.
That's why we're roughing it in, right.
I think once we get going, we can start looking for those opportunities.
I think the lighting too, the musco lighting, now you go to any stadium, you can't even see the lights when you leave the stadium. Yeah, they're so focused on the field and I think.
Once we do Doyle, I think people will have that. Writing at Doyle, so once we do that, I think people have, but you live there, right now, you can see the lighting from one.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you won't, that won't happen once. That'll be a good sample, so I think it may be something, you know, an easy bucket. So we'll.
How about a Fenway update?
Um, Fenway update, the game is still on, um, everybody's nervous about rain, we, we've, uh, think it's going to die down about one o'clock, so she assured me that the game is still on, so.
They wouldn't cancel it, would they?
Well, the, well, I don't think they would cancel it, but it's Fenway Park and, and it's.
Fenway gets flooded with the rain.
So what's that? Correct, so their, their turf management, uh, people are pretty strict, as you can imagine, so they're, they'll be fixing divots at halftime. They told us, after the band gets off, for real.
The buses and the tickets?
So the buses, yep, I had sent out the, uh, the bus schedule for all of the, uh, student, uh, fan buses will be, they should arrive at the flagpole at three thirty.
How many buses?
Uh, we have three, three buses for, uh, the students and then one for the band families, and then we have the four for our, um, football and cheer teams, so eight, eight total, correct. So that's all going to take place at, at the flagpole, uh, park your vehicles around the school here, uh, will drive us into, to Fenway and then, then they'll return, hopefully the traffic will, will comply with the times, I think we have it figured out, but, uh, it should work out with the times we're leaving.
And with Wednesday's game, do we now move, is at the end of fall season and that's the transition period for the winter season?
So every, everything starts on Monday, uh, for winter athletics, kids should have signed up, uh, on our family ID arbiter registration app, they need to do that to be cleared. Uh, by our nursing staff with the physicals in order to, uh, participate on Monday for all of our high school athletics and that. Those emails have been going out, um, since September, so I, I'd be very surprised and shocked if, if parents were not, uh, did not get an email or not know that date, but it is there.
You say cleared, what does that actually require?
So cleared, um, means that the, the, the kids need a physical that is good for thirteen months, so. Parents can upload that physical form to our registration site, and that will go directly to our nursing staff, whether they're at the middle school, at the high school. That, that'll be opened up, and if it says that they have the proper physical exam from a doctor, um, they will just hit an approval status, which our coach has a list of the kids that are trying out, and they'll look at the name and it will show approved, um, on that, um, technology. So they need to get that physical in, um, if they played a fall sport, they should be good to go as long as it doesn't expire. Okay, thank you, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on Wednesday.
Yes.
See you Wednesday.
Big score. You need a win.
All right. You, you settled in there, Tyler?
Yeah.
Okay, it's all yours.
All right, so I'm going to report, um, the CTI report first, because Marcus isn't here. Um, so he says that there are forty-one total students on co-op at this point in the school year. Twelve out of the thirteen seniors in electrical are placed in co-op positions, they're getting real-world experience while getting paid and receiving work hours towards their license. And then juniors are completing their OSHA ten and perfecting their skills, I don't know what that is.
You know, steel toes and just safety.
All right, all right, um, carpentry is racking up their deck and deck slash porch project. Business tech implemented a new digital learning environment that makes it easier for students to consume uh, foundational business technology curriculum, so far biz tech freshmen and sophomores have collectively spent over three hundred hours on learning tasks and their class grade averages are eighty-nine percent and eighty-six percent respectively. Um, senior HVAC students are installing a new boiler and connecting to the zones installed, uh, the week before. In honors electronics, they're participating in STEM Week with Mr. Freel in the media center. Big robot is on display in there, um, and there are a few other projects that students created. And then advanced manufacturing for the fifth year in a row is running an adult CNC machining program. The program runs from October to December and is for a hundred hours, and upon completion, Mass Hire runs a job fair with local employees. That's the end of the CTI report. Um, the LHS report, Coach Pelosi pretty much summed it up, the Fenway game is on Wednesday at Fenway Park at six thirty. We're pretty excited to be playing on Fenway Park. Uh, that means that the pep rally for would be the whole, whole football team, but especially recognizing seniors is tomorrow during our half day. And then earlier this week, uh, our football team helped unload trees at the Gardner Spot for veterans, we did that, we did that last week. Um, on November tenth and eleventh, Ignition Show Choir had a great performance at the Bay State Show Choir Festival at Oliver Ames High School in Northeastern. Uh, this past Saturday, November eighteenth, four students auditioned and were accepted into the Central District Chorus. CJ Evans, Maggie Leighton, Connor Knowsworthy, and Christian Wyman. CJ and Christian both scored high enough to earn recommendations to audition for All-State. Um, breakfast for the bands is on Sunday, was on Sunday, November nineteenth, it was a huge success for the LHS marching band. Uh, the LHS Theater Company had three successful and wonderful performances of the musical Pajama Game on Friday, November seventeenth, and Saturday, November eighteenth. Fifteen LHS Theater Company students will be competing in the METG Scholarship Contest on December second. A cheer team took third in the States on Saturday, this past Saturday. Then registration for winter sports is open, which Coach Pelosi mentioned before. Uh, senior breakfast is happening tomorrow, and the annual powder puff game is happening at five thirty at Doyle, that's when senior girls, freshman girls, junior girls, play sophomore girls, and we, we fundraised, our senior class fundraised for that, it's a flag football game. So the lights will be on at Doyle, late into tomorrow.
Sounds like a song.
Uh, and then we're holding a toy drive, Phila Cruiser in cooperation with Lemmonstor Police Department, so that is, that is all I have.
Lot of info.
Thing, that's, yeah, a lot going on. What award did you just receive?
I got the little award.
Mark Badanza.
All about it.
That's the best.
Yeah, that. Pretty cool, thank you.
Great.
Little. Genuine.
Yeah. Yeah.
You should be really proud of that, Tyler.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That wasn't his real name. That's your homework, you better find out what your little, real, real life name was. It was a fault. Italian, I'm going to let you find out, tomorrow you text me. That's your homework. All right, thank you very much, and did you, anybody from the police department get back to you? I'll talk to you tomorrow. All right, let's, um, what else we got here, we've got, uh, oh, let's do Habitat and Humanity presentation.
Beishan?
Principal Dan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
For the, the, the last two weeks, the trivia question has been, where is Roche Ave?
Where is Roche Ave, Roche Ave is.
I know, I'm just saying, that's what everybody keeps asking.
Oh, everybody keeps asking.
I'm like, you know where we're going, I'm going to let it, let it go. Roach, Roach's Pond.
Yeah, it's, uh, on your way to, uh, towards Keemart Plaza from Lemmonstor, right before you go over Route Two on the left. There's a little dead end road right there, there's a red house on the corner, and we're right behind it.
And it's Roach's Pond, even though they call it Pierce Pond, for some reason, I don't know the history behind it, but they call it Roach's Pond. Sure why, so it's a conflict between the Pierce's and the Roach's.
Okay.
Goes back many years. Sounds good, right? Sounds good. All right, go ahead.
The house is, uh, three bedrooms with two baths, it's about eleven hundred and seventy-six square feet. Like we said, it's on Roche Ave. Um, they're getting ready to post, or if they haven't already posted, um, information for the opportunity to own the house.
They did too, they did one at City Hall and then one last Saturday at ten and one in the light.
Great, and that, it's, yeah, it's in your packet and it's on the slide, if they go to the next slide up on the screen. It's on the bottom of that, it's the website.
You've got the clicker.
Oh, I got the clicker?
You don't know how.
I thought Kyle was doing this one. There we go, there it is, okay, so more information, uh, www dot NCM Habitat dot org. We've got four different shops that participate in the construction of the home, carpentry, plumbing, electrical, HVAC. Uh, and don't forget the R for refrigeration, they get offended if you don't say refrigeration.
Very important during the, uh.
It is.
Summer months.
It is, there are approximately ninety-three students that will get an opportunity to work on the house while it's being built, uh, in all four shops combined. We communicate daily, uh, with Carolyn Reed, she's the Executive Director of Habitat and Humanity, Rick Perkins is their site supervisor, who works directly with our, um, our instructors, who are all licensed certified master electricians, master plumbers, contractors, instruction supervisors, et cetera. And that's, that's basically about it, at this point in time, uh, all the walls have already been put up, we're ready for the trusses to go on. Uh, the truss package should arrive over Thanksgiving week. And we're hoping for Friday, so when we come back, we can start setting trusses, uh, as soon as we get that roof on, keep the snow off of it, the better. And we'll get the windows and doors in, those have been ordered as well, and, and once it's weather tight, we're using a zip wall system and roofing system. Those zip wall doesn't require any tieback or house wrap or anything like that to be considered weather tight. So once we get it weather tight, the other, the other programs can come in and set. Getting their plumbing, their electrical, running any duct work, et cetera, it's moving along pretty quick.
You had a late start, though.
A real late start, we, we didn't start, so, uh, we started, uh, I think October fourteenth, October twelfth. And it's, you know, it's a ranch, it's a one-story ranch and it goes up pretty quickly. Kids are doing a great job and trying to get it covered before the snow.
What a great community, it ties it all together for them.
Yeah.
They understand what's going on.
Yep.
And what they're doing.
Kids love it.
Yeah, that's, it's a great project.
They can't believe that they can actually build a house like this, and I can't believe this, we've only done sheds, you know, so they really enjoy.
Really build a house.
Those kids.
It'll be interesting to see the per square foot cost on materials.
Yeah.
Once it's built.
Yeah.
Um, because that gives, gives us a better idea of the, I mean, take out the labor part, which is probably, yeah, but it'll be interesting to see the materials and and the, uh, the cost.
Absolutely.
Per square foot on.
I think we already got some numbers on that for the framing costs, but then there's all the other aspects.
Right.
It'll be, it'll be really neat to see that.
So I think this is a vote of the school committee, because they're working off site here, liability wise, and, um, it's not a city project.
Yeah.
So, um.
Second. Thank you.
Second, any questions or comments, if not, all in favor? And I like that it's a small house.
Yep.
When we ended the program, we were starting to build these, like, big houses.
Eight thousand square meters, yeah.
Then we had people, you know, they had a, a big lot aside of them, so we're chopping off a lot, and then they'd sell their house for profit and then build a house next to it, and that's not the intent, so. Once we figure out the cost, then, I mean, somebody could get into this house for a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's amazing.
Yeah.
And then we started looking already for a lot for next time.
Yep.
And see if they want to partner with us again, I don't know if they already have another one.
We're going to work on our flyer and, uh, get ready to post that, so we can try to have a house selected by the end of January. So we'll keep you up to date on that, because I know you're interested in it.
We had a lot here on Birch Street.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we sold that through the auction, but, um, there was a house there, we tore it down, they just built it too low.
Okay.
And it was just like submerged in water, and you could never take, we spent money on the drainage, trying to help the guy, I was a veteran, tried to keep him in his house as long as we could, but. I think the right house with the right drainage system would be a nice lot, it's a good-sized lot.
Yeah.
So.
That's good.
Come up with something.
Yep, I'll keep checking in and, uh, I'll keep you in the loop once we have the flyer ready.
Yeah, let the members know, maybe we could go someday and bang some nails together.
It's good.
That's the whole point of the project, right, is to.
Good.
Get different groups to go and.
Kids on site.
Thank you. Thank you.
And. Next, Maureen, did you have a presentation tonight?
Good evening, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Well, this is on DESI Comprehensive Review.
Yes, it is. Superintendent Deacon has asked me to bring some information to you about a review that's going to be taking place in the district this year. So in your package, you have, um, a few slides, just to summarize the additional information you have, which is probably about twenty pages or so detailing the information and what will be, be coming from that. So just some background information for you, um, this is a programmatic review for the district, it is very comprehensive, so it will be touching on all aspects of the district, from finance through curriculum and into special education and other services. It is, it's in place because of a mass general law. And it takes the place of something that used to be called EQA, so we have had EQA, Educational Quality and Accountability Reviews in the past. Um, we've been around to, I've been around long enough to have gone through three of those, that department is no longer part of DESI. And this is a new program, we have not had one of these comprehensive reviews in Lemmonstor since it was put in place, um, in two thousand and eight. So this is the first, it's separate from our coordinated program review, which takes place every five years or so. And that is really about all of our title and federal monies, so that one still takes place, we're just finishing up, um, a mid, a mid-cycle review on that. And the reason Lemmonstor was lucky enough to get this election this year was that we've not had one, and the high school itself is not part of a NEASK review this year, so there's about ten, I believe, ten districts that will be taking part in it this year. It will. It will, it will come to a, a cumulative report for us, this report will have a variety of things in it, so they're going to take information about the district's context and background, our demographics, student achievement from the DESI levels, so MCAS and access. They will be providing us with, um, strengths and challenges, and then some recommendations for systemic improvement. There will be observational ratings from classrooms at every grade level at every school. And this report will probably be around somewhere this summer, um, with it definitely being published sometime next fall, so it will take them a considerable amount of time after they've come here to look at the, um, look at our programs and things that we have in place. The next piece, as I mentioned, it's, it's everything, so the standards include leadership and governance, that's where you come in. And they will be asking to have a focus group with school committee members, as well as all of, um, Superintendent Deacon's cabinet-level members. And, uh, they will be looking at human resources, professional development, they'll be looking at all of our finances, so they'll have an audit piece of the financing. They'll be looking at curriculum instruction, assessment, and then student supports, so they will, um, they're going to be looking at everything we have going on.
Once it's again, happening.
So the, um, the timeline for this, right now, we're already compiling the documents that they're requesting, we'll be doing that through, um, winter and providing them with these documents to look at before they come out, then sometime in the spring, they will come out for three to four days. They have not let Superintendent Deacon know yet, um, but they're, they really are working with us to, to not get in the way of MCAS in the spring, so it will be some. But they're, they really are working with us to, to not get in the way of MCAS in the spring, so it will be sometime probably in April. Maybe early May. While they're out here, they will be doing. Site visits to every single one of our schools, classrooms in the schools. They'll be doing interviews, as I've mentioned, with school committee members, with district administration. With school administration, focus groups with parents and high school level students. So there will be a variety of those, some of those they will be doing using Google Classroom or Google Meets or, or Zoom. But while they're out here, they will be onsite, they will be staying, I'm sure, at one of the nearby hotels. And they will be in our schools for three to four days.
Okay, any questions? All right, let us know when.
We just picked as a.
They, the master general law says that they'd like it to be five years, I think that the COVID pandemic got in the way of their timeline for all of the districts. Started out in two thousand and eight with the mass general law and now obviously it's a long time later, we've not had one of these yet. So. Yes, they were partial reviews and then there's the complete review. And it was the first week of school and we received the letter, we're coming in, we're doing it all. So actually, it's, it's really good timing, the information for a new superintendent is gonna be very, very informative. So it's ju, it's a ton, it's a ton, so as the pieces are coming together, we'll just keep you updated. Don't be surprised if you're not in another focus group. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you want to talk about the Nass Association of School Committee Conference presentation? Of note, anything we should know about? Those that couldn't attend.
Good sportsmanship. They were saying that their ability to have referees and umpires have been greatly impacted by them not feeling safe. Kind of get back to, you know, sort of the sportsmanship and code of conduct and. Really how, you know, parents and family and friends really. So that was the big issue.
And I think that, you know, they're really talking about the difference between quality and equity, because not all students are. Starting from the same vantage points and have the same foundations, much less like when we were talking about several years ago. If by the age three, if you don't have some of the fundamentals underneath your belt, then you're not going to, you know.
I was talking about equity in our schools.
Yeah, we did, and then now.
Some districts had. That was years in the making to get. Better balanced out, that, that happened. But I think our teachers do a good job. Understanding their, I've had in classes where students don't speak in English at all and it was working with, do everything they can do. You just leave the parents out of it. Leave the kids at the new playground. Leave the parents. For a little while and everything's just fine. They're the best.
Ronnie, you were in every corner at the conference.
Ronnie, every time you go, people report back, so.
Yeah.
I have spies.
Well, you know, whatever the spies told you.
Everybody in, enrollment, wait, everybody waits to find out if you're going.
I get asked if Ron's coming.
Yeah, and then when you, you sign up, everybody signs up, that's true.
Well, you know, I, I, I went, I went, I went, I went to eight classes along with a delegate assembly. Delegate Assembly was on a Wednesday and, you know. You can't make these stories up. It went from three o'clock. Till seven thirty quarter of eight and, and. There was a lot of food fraud going on, to the point where. Three times, not once, not twice, three times, they wanted to have the meeting stopped. And begin again at nine thirty.
At night?
At night.
Wow, this is hardcore.
And there was a lot of arguing, the.
I missed it.
Oh, you know, it, it, it wasn't even funny. I mean, they had some, they had some people yelling at one. Oh, there was, there was one moment in time, I really felt bad for Glenn because he. And it was like watching something on TV, Three Stooges.
Well, get to the pot, what happened?
What were they talking? He had to say, this is an amendment to the amendment, to the amendment, to the amendment. There was fifteen amendments added on. And they disagreed. I got a list of the stuff.
Give us a couple.
Well, there was the, there was, there was the stuff about the, you know, the resolutions.
Yeah.
Well, the resolutions, they, they. Many of them, they got, that failed.
Well, give us an example of one, one resolution and then, and then what the amendment might have been, like an example.
Well, the amendments.
Oh, give us the.
I sa, I saved it too and I lost it.
Just one.
Well, here, the, the resolution on full, full sta, full stable funding for Metco, that passed. The regional transportation, that was tabled. The diversity, equity and inclusion tabled, because they argued, because they all had different definition of, of diversity. Diversity, equity and, you know, like you were saying, equity.
Well, the whole point of the matter is to, is to get people to buy in, so they couldn't even do that.
The argument that was being made, and we hear the same argument here. You know, we talk about raising monies for. Transportation or, you know, collecting monies from the kids. And they were saying they were having a hard time collecting because there were some kids that couldn't pay. And there was some saying, we don't want to do that. We had the same arguments here.
No, we didn't, we all agreed that we would.
We all agreed, right, but the arguments. He should have ran this course. Oh, it, it was. It was just, it, it was, it was awful. The school building authority, that was passed. S, school building. SBA, that was passed. School staff surveillance. Armed surveillance and enforcement penalties, that was tabled because there was too many arguments. Related to MCAS, that was tabled, safe storage of firearms, that was, it was a.
Safe storage of what?
Of firearms.
Oh, my goodness.
That was tabled because there was arguments over that, I mean. It, it, it was, you know, it, it, it compounded because these were, these were legally consenting adults.
Setting good examples for us, students.
The thing that is, I wish, I wish they would have shown this to all the students. Just to see what exactly was going on, because.
Show.
Okay, what'd you do?
You should have taught them compromise.
It was the second or third resolution, they were trying to pass it, I says, look at, if we, if you pass this. If you.
Right.
Pass it.
You should have.
Oh, they didn't want to do that.
We're gonna do.
I had Robert's Rules of Order right with me, I says, look, it says here, you can do it.
I'm coming next time.
We can't do that.
And we're gonna, we're gonna teach the course on compromise next time.
And now there's rumors that they want to have the delegate assembly for the whole day. Part of the morning, part of the afternoon, because what's happened, I think the discovery, that when they bring out the resolutions, they want to. Push it right through.
Right.
And there's some people, they don't want that, they want to express their opinion, or if they have no opinion, just. Hear their voice.
Well, the point of going to these things is, you know, I mean, obviously, everybody. Advocates for their system and what's best for them. But the whole point of having a mass associated school committee is, you gotta kind of meet in the middle somewhere, that's the whole point of having this association.
There was some people, there was no meeting in the middle.
Obviously, situat thinks differently than we do, or something like Cohasset thinks differently than we do. So you're never gonna get people to agree, that's the whole, not the whole point, the point is. We're all different schools and different communities.
One of the classes I went to was vocational tech part one and two. And that was, it was good, it was interesting, but I took the guy by the small hairs because he was saying. The vocational tech classes, they're only, they're really good for people who can only work with hands. I says, you know what? I hope you don't go telling that to nurses, that they're only good vocational, so they can work with their hands. Because you know what, they're gonna set you straight up like an arrow. Vocational tech isn't just for people who work with their hands, they gotta think too, they have to be able to talk, how to critical think. Oh, you're insulting, it ain't even part of the. This is a guy who's teaching a class and a hundred people and saying something like that, but. And then my biggest. On artificial intelligence, and I was trying.
I was gonna bring that up, they didn't bring that up, that and facial recognition?
There was a whole thing on artificial intelligence and the guy. I don't, the guy said that we have no evidence that artificial intelligence is thinking like human beings. And I mean, he's sitting there and it's, and the table is. They know artificial intelligence is thinking like human beings. And all of a sudden, Sunday, Sunday's paper. Does a chat G P T broke the Turing test to show them that they can, they can think like humans. I mean, if you, if you talk to your cell phone and you ask Siri to do this or do that. Yes, you can't make her swear, but there are kids that are trying to hack their phone to make Siri swear.
Siri can do a lot more than it does, it just doesn't, it's like facial recognition. They don't want to use it because people go out of their minds, but they can already do it, they're.
Yeah, and I mean, if you're not gonna talk about two thousand and one HAL, the robot, who took on. If you don't want.
Is that chess?
Then let's talk about Star Wars, let's talk about R D two D, they've got them talking like a human being. It's as simple as that, artificial intelligence is already. And it's not, because what happens, this is where the part that get really upset. We are all programmed at birth. The trick pony in that is that the exons and the dendrites connect and they start moving on.
Dog genetics.
So whatever, whatever you were exposed to at birth, going on, all of a sudden, things start clicking, it's the same thing with the flipping computers. That's what scares people, because the guy's saying, if they start thinking like human beings, we're gonna be having problems because. We can't control them, the issue has always been control. And then I'm gonna stop talking, the worst thing he didn't talk about.
They're not already controlling us.
They're trying to, the worst thing out of this whole thing is, they didn't talk about technological determinism. They were talking about technology, but they weren't talking about technological determinism, because it determines where we are going.
Well, I will say this to end this conversation, artificial intelligence is a tool. We can use it for what is beneficial and the rest of it, like anything else. There's always people that use it for the good reasons, right, for the positive things, and then there are people that use it for, you know, to scam people or. But I know when my mother gets the phone call saying they have me and they want to release me, but they need money to, you know, bail me out. She says what she said, she said, I'll say what I always say, keep them, that's what she says, I said, but it's gonna sound just like me. And she says, doesn't matter, just tell them to keep them.
All right, thank you, Ron. That was it.
Anything else, anybody? If not, we will move now on. Two of the minutes for October sixteenth, seems like years ago.
Second.
Any questions or comments, errors, omissions, if everything looks good, all in favor, those opposed, thank you. Now we'll move on to subcommittee reports, do we have policies subcommittee?
You're going to take out the actual. And number four, we're gonna take out because that. So anything having.
So if you need to vote on the course.
So we're gonna. Um, the second one is curriculum contextual issues. A.
A.
And that one is the track that's your. Packet, we are going to approve that as is. Is the I H A M V. Wherever it says principal and putting. Um, the last sentence, we're going to say that the policy will be. Um, before the start of each school year.
Okay, any questions? Any questions, the second, Ron, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, those opposed, thank you. Finance updates, do we have any?
Is project done? I think Melissa wants to. Just, just something to read the warrants. I'll make a motion that we approve the following warrants, warrant thirteen totaling four thou, uh, four hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and nine cents. Warrant fourteen totaling two million seven hundred and seven thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. Warrant fifteen, that totals three hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Warrant sixteen, that totals six million eight hundred and ten thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Warrant seventeen totaling three hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Warrant eighteen totaling two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. And warrant nineteen, which totals three hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Grains and revolving, we have warrant thirteen, that totals four hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars and five cents. Warrant fourteen, that totals three hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty cents. Warrant fifteen, that totals one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and three dollars and seventy-three cents. Warrant seventeen, that total seventy-two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Warrant eighteen, that totals four hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And warrant nineteen, that totals two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents, I make a motion to approve them.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, approval of the minute of the warrants, those opposed, thank you. Anything on the new or old business, or we have a second reading of any of these policies, no? That's all coming.
So I guess, which one do you want to approve?
Let's do the field trip. Everybody had a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, all in favor, those opposed, thank you. All right. You heard the rendition of. A bunch of letters. All in favor?
All opposed.
Like the Three Stooges.
It's like I said, I just.
It's worse every year out there, Ron.
It just, I just wish, I, I'm, I'm, I mean, when I say, I wish they would show this. To the kids, hell, not the adults, the kids.
Yeah.
I told them, I says, you're lucky with this not on TV.
That's right.
Yeah, because you guys would really be embarrassed. Full shot.
Yeah. Well, you did a good job, Ron, thanks for the representation. New and old business, anything on the new world business? Yes, Eileen?
That we set a proposal. funded to the city council for charter to increase. Set a standard for. For after. Change in our reimbursement. Ten years. Ten years, so just to. Do the budget, um, stay.
All in favor? The, anything else on the new world? Yeah.
I don't know, like, to see the, um, even kids. Particularly this little school. Had to be canceled. Contract doesn't specify some of the sporting events, so in future contract, I'm not sure, especially in this blessing contract, uh, is up, but we. Certainly, there's anything we're discussing or add from another. Bus drivers calling out and things like that, so I.
So is it, they don't have shortage of bus drivers? That's a problem.
So I think that's part of the problem, that they're not mandated in their contract to provide busing for events. So it's, if they, if it was in their contract, then they would have to find substitutes or bus drivers. But because it's, um, it's, it's, it's not in the contract, they kind of say, uh, we don't have anybody.
Plus, I hear from the other school district, I think.
And that's part of it.
It's part of it.
But the thing of it is, you know, to me, that's just me, that's just an excuse.
It could be.
You know, it's like, you wouldn't like it to hear, you were supposed to have a surgery. "Oh, well, we don't have enough doctors today, and you're gonna just have to have pain for another four days." Would you like to hear that? No. Same thing, you know, same, you can't get the drivers.
To the, to the driver's credit, there's not enough drivers in general. And then you have people who are up at four or five in the morning, and then to ask them to work another four days on the end, right?
Some are working part-time, so they, they, they can't work more than X amount of hours.
Uh, totally different topic. I think I, if I remember correctly, we voted on an RFP for superintendent search and getting affirmed. Do we know where that stands? We're past the election now, and probably should put a committee together.
Back out, we, um, we received no responses until MASC. Yes, and it was submitted on the very last day. MASC had asked Christine to bring them over to City Hall. They were not acceptable. They need to be mailed in, in a sealed envelope, and so the bid is going back out as of today.
Only MASC bid.
Yes. The other part of the picture, to piggyback on Eileen's buses, I know I said that to follow up earlier. I heard some stuff. For the ground, regarding electric, electric buses.
Ledger.
Well, there's enough, there's enough, there's enough talking about out there now, about the urge to go read and buses, and electric buses. I'm just curious to see how much can we, how much can they.
Pretty soon, the AI is gonna be driving the bus.
That might be.
Artificial intelligence. You know, Tesla buses.
Okay, just, just, just.
Just saying.
The facade we're saying. You're looking at someone who worked in factory in high school, okay? Now they got robots doing the same work in the factory. So it's not too far-fetched that they'll be. Look at Tesla with the cars.
Exactly.
Tesla, Tesla, Tesla. I get my words on stuff, anyway.
Try one of those bikes.
It's an electric bike.
Click your drive in it, you pump it, I'm like.
It's got three.
A lot of people are like. I see great shape, I said.
Battery average, and I was thinking.
It's all over the place. Everybody thinks, "I hope not," and I'm like, "Go away."
Anyway. Add on to something. Ellen and I went to see that, that play.
That subject, you don't have to change.
Well, yeah, I guess I hear about it enough times, about the electric bikes. Anyway, Ellen and I went to see the play, pillow, pillow games, and it was good.
Pillow.
Pillow game, family game, whatever. It was a, it was a good, I really liked, they did.
You know, I thought I saw that in the battle, and then somebody say, "I did it nineteen seventy-three."
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
Yeah, Shirley Reclaim was in it.
I was still in high school. I just got here, I just got here, it was built. And I was forced to go.
All right, anything else?
Not emotional, too. I know we're all having fun and everything, but life, life goes on outside of this meeting, so.
All right, so.
Have a second?
I'll second. All in favor?
I.
The rest of you can stay here and start along.